Welcome to the Wednesday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two Thurston County Planning Commission meeting. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as comprehensive plan and zoning zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All planning commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all planning commission briefings and work sessions. Public comment is allowed on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Eric Casino. I'm this season's chair of the Planning Commission. I am with the reside in District Two. We're going to start our sound checks. We'll start online. We have one commissioner online this evening, I believe. Commissioner Pestinger?
Kevin Pestinger, District One.
Thank you. I'm going to start down here with you.
Derek Dick, District One.
Jim Simmons, District Three.
Owen White, District One.
Scott Nelson, District Three.
Don Carmen, District Two.
Mary Halverson, District Two.
Thank you very much. With that, has everybody had any chance to look over this evening's agenda? I do want to make an addition here that good of the order is not mentioned, but at the end of the meeting, where we would normally have a good order to update on. We'll have a short discussion about the new handbook and a short update on meetings and minority reports to a small degree. Is there anything else anybody would like to discuss?
I had just a small request that would probably take like two minutes.
Okay, we'll add you into that as well then. Okay, with that, I had an entertaining motion on the agenda. I'm over approval. Second, it's been moved in second. Is there any other further discussion on the agenda?
Just that everything's there for items at six thirty again.
Yes, we'll move through it as quickly as we can with that. Call for the vote?
Commissioner Pestinger? Commissioner Hanson absent. Commissioner Day? Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carmen?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Haverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Casino?
Aye. The motion passes and the agenda is approved. Onto our next item is the approval of meeting minutes from August third, two thousand and twenty-two. I hope everybody's had a chance to go through them. With that entertaining motion to approve the meeting minutes of August third, two thousand and twenty-two. I move to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record for August third. Second, is there any other discussion on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, the motion is to accept the meeting minutes or to approve the meeting minutes and set the audio as the official recording for August third, two thousand and twenty-two. Call for the vote?
Commissioner Pestinger?
Nay.
Commissioner Hanson absent. Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Aye.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Aye.
Commissioner Carmen?
Aye.
Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Haverson?
Aye.
Commissioner Casino?
Aye, and that motion passes seven to one. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the portion of the meeting for public communication. I do not believe that there's anybody in the courtroom that wishes to address the planning commission during this part. And if there's anybody online that would like to address us for issues that we have not had a public hearing on for or do not plan on having one this evening for. Because we are going to have a public hearing later on this evening on the emergency housing ordinance. If you have anything to say, please raise your hand. And I do, oh, it looks like we have Christie White on board. And Christie, you know all of our rules real well, so we'll be happy to hear from you. Chris, are you there? There you go.
There we go. The delay, the delayed reaction. Well, good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring up about the capital plan. As I scanned all one hundred and sixty pages of this document, kudos to the staff. It's it's quite a document. Just encourage you to to look at it closely. There's a lot of money there and to have a public hearing so soon in September with the volume that's in there. That's that's a lot of work to be done and I think a pretty short period of time. So just wanted to to comment on that. Another issue I wanted to mention this evening that isn't necessarily directly in your purview as it lies with the Department of Ecology. However, the relationship and the coordination and influence and all of that regarding the concentrated animal feeding operations. There is movement out there with Department of Ecology to start structuring more what small farms, you know, people who raise chickens and ducks and a few cattle being potentially heavily restricted in their ability to do that and also possibly face a lot of heavy permit costs. And I I have some concern about that as as a rural person and and our neighbors who provide local food that we do and and you as a planning commission do whatever you can to support that rural activity that is small and doesn't become burdensome, that people can't raise their own food, you know, small operations on their land. I I think, you know, working with the voluntary stewardship commissions and and organizations that there could be options that don't overly burden the rural folks. So that's what I had for you tonight. It's warm out there.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else online that I'd like to address the planning commission? All right, seeing no further people on there, we're going to start some new business tonight with a work session on CPA for the Capital Improvement Program with Andrew Bond.
Good evening, commissioners. Nice to meet you finally. So right before I dive into the presentation, I'm going to have the county staff that are with us. As you can see, there's quite a few of them. Introduce themselves just so that we can be fully aware of who they are and what the firm they work for. I guess we could start in the the actual room. We have Robin Campbell, the Assistant County Manager. And then we have Rick Thomas, who is the Project Manager with Public Works and America's Interviewing and his new projects. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that? So I'm going to start with the county staff on Shannon. Can you introduce yourself and what your role is? Can you hear me?
No audio. No audio, Shannon.
Okay, so we're going to have a break. Joe?
Joe Plahuda, Senior Water Resource Engineer with Thurston County Public Works. Work with capital program development for the county's water and sewer utilities.
Matt?
Good afternoon. My name is Matt Ossman, Thurston County Traffic Engineer.
Thank you. Jeff? Good evening. Jeff Pickford and the Solid Waste Manager here at Public Works.
Scott?
Good evening. Scott Lindlum, County Engineer with Public Works.
Nate?
Good evening. Nate Ensley, Senior Water Resources Engineer at Public Works. I oversee our stormwater capital program.
Thank you. Jason?
I'm Jason Ash with the Facility Services Manager with Central Services.
Becky?
Good evening. I'm Becky Khan with Thurston County Public Works in their traffic department.
And then finally, I believe, just add.
Good afternoon, commission. My name is Ed Morrison. I'm the Parks and Trails Maintenance and Operations Manager.
Oh, Tim, sorry.
Good afternoon. Tim Wilson, Water Resources Manager with Public Works.
Thank you, guys. If you can go ahead and start the presentation. So tonight we're going to be talking about the Capital Program for them. It is an annual update that happens on a yearly basis to meet the statutory requirements required. So next slide, please. I'm going to provide an overview to just the overall process. The the role CPED plays is more of a functional piece. We are ones to kind of bring everyone together, kind of consolidate the documents so that we can take it through the process and bring it to the planning commission and take it to the Board of County Commissioners for final approval. So the capital facility in CIP, it is required under the Growth Management Act, and then it is capital facility element within our comprehensive plan. The elements must include the needed, the need for support and future growth. Policies that ensure that it's consistent with capital facility planning and will rest within the comprehensive plan for the next twenty years. And that's batched lower surface as defined for facilities. So for example, we have parks and acreage for roads and lakes. Just kind of meeting the demand of the growing community. And finally, it's a six-year financing plan that shows the funding sources and the expected cost for projects. And within the comprehensive plan, it is known as Appendix G. Next slide, please. So again, Appendix G looks at a six-year period of improvements. It is updated annually. So those of us who have been here before have probably recognized this document. It is consistent with the county budget, but it is not budget. It is just consistent with it and is amended as the budget is amended. And like I previously, it identifies the funding sources and the estimated cost of the project. Next slide, please. So here's a diagram that kind of shows the overall capital facilities planning. We have CPED, who is a primary organizer facilitator through the process. We have Public Works and Facilities, which are the primary contributors to the documents that kind of builds the overall projects that you'll see over the next six years. We have the Budget Office to make sure that we have the money. It aligns perfectly. And finally, school and fire districts, which I will kind of touch on at a later date, and how they participate within our CIP process. Next slide, please. So what is the capital facility? At this point, RCW provides a minimum standard for capital facilities and essentially identifies which facilities are needed to support the growth that set community. Financing for projects including excise tax and impact fees must also be included within the CIP document. Next slide, please. So Thurston County has a wide range of different capital facilities that includes transportation facilities, water sewer systems, parks and recreation, stormwater, solid waste. And then at the bottom, you can see that public utilities, schools and fire have an asterisk. Essentially, those different capital facilities have their own set CIP process to identify their changes. And when they have kind of solidified their CIP, they provide that to us as a reference within our CIP. So we don't have a significant individual CIP processes. Next slide, please. So what is the planning commission's role at the CIP? It's more or less regulatory step as defined by state law that we must attend both the planning commission and finally the Board of County Commissioners. With the planning commission, we will provide overview of the overall projects, kind of general expenditures and financing and kind of some project highlights. The Board of County Commissioners was provided an in-depth presentation on July thirteenth where we provided a very similar presentation, but it actually dove into the individual projects and outlined kind of what was expected for each. The next piece is to ask questions to staff. That's why you'll see, oh, sorry. Struggles. Can we return back to the planning commission page, man? Thanks. The wonderful reason that all county staff are here today is more or less be there to answer any questions that you might have on the individual project. Because they are, they know all. And finally, host a public hearing and provide a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Next slide. So as I mentioned previously, I will be going over each individual department and kind of what their expectations are in establishing projects, their general funding, funding sources, as well as overview of some picture projects that are down the pipe. Next slide. So starting in parks and trails, their ultimate goals to design a facility that deals with repairs, addresses capacity of existing facilities and produces maintenance. Most of their selection is based on citizen input, funding available, professional judgment. They have a wide range of funding options. They have REIT funding, impact fees and appropriations, as well as conservation futures. Over the next six years, they anticipate spending roughly twenty-seven million dollars. Next slide, please. Some upcoming major projects to kind of keep on your radar is the Deschutes Falls Park Walkway and Viewpoint improvements, the Shohayless Buster replacement. And finally, the restroom replacement improvement program. Next slide. Now we're going to dive into solid waste. Their goal is to provide an efficient, reliable and affordable solid waste collection program. They select based on the projects that will improve safety for both the public and staff and address current and future obligations, both on operations and regulatory requirements. Their primary funding source is the solid waste fund, and they anticipate spending roughly twenty-nine point seven billion in the next six years. Next slide, please. So some of the major projects they kind of foresee are applying is the flare station, the scatter system replacement, the pump system upgrades and improvements. Finally, a possible South County transfer station.
I'm sorry. I just don't know what I'm saying.
I believe Jeff can obviously speak to that. It's Jeff. Are you available to chime in real quick? Certainly. A transfer station is basically it's a location where both commercial collection vehicles as well as the public, they could bring their waste to it. It's 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 compacted, reloaded and transferred offsite ultimately to a disposal site such as a landfill. So basically the the waste is not staying there. It's being transferred to somewhere else that towards finally being disposed. Can you speak to the flare station and what that kind of role is? The flare is the our waste and recovery center in Lacey is also the site of an old closed landfill. And so the flare station is has to do with the collection of the methane gas that's generated by our old closed landfill. So we actually were resizing the flares because the flares, the twenty-two-year-old landfill that we don't produce as much gas as we used to. So we actually downsized the flares because the flares that are there currently are way oversized and don't operate efficiently based upon our current gas generation.
Really quick on that topic. I mean, it looks like that's been done this year though, right?
That that will finish actually within the next couple of months. Yes. Next slide, please. Moving on to the stormwater authority. Their ultimate goal is to produce localized flooding in Thurston County and improve water quality. They choose projects based on capital needs and energy infrastructure. And they also must meet the state and federal requirements that are dictated to them as well as gets reviewed by the storm surface water advisor. Their primary funding is utility fees and grants, and they anticipate spending roughly six point four million dollars for the next six years. My next slide, please. So I'm trying to pronounce this correctly. The Manzanita Drive Convenance. The majority of each round northwest vicinity retrofit, the Boston Harbor Road, our East Stormwater Fans. And the Water Creek retrofit are some of their major upcoming projects to look forward to. Yeah, maybe I mistaken. You want us to wait for the end of this past questions or do you want us, are we going to go through these? Probably it would probably be ideal to wait till the end of that weekend. Deal with it. I probably shouldn't mention that. I apologize. My next slide, please. Moving on to the water sewer utility, their ultimate goal is to provide safe and reliable drinking water to the customers as well as preserve the environment of the community. They must choose their projects based on state and federal regulatory requirements and service demands. Their primary funding sources are utility fees, new financing, and the American Rescue Plan Act grant also part by. And they anticipate spending roughly fifteen point eight billion in the next six years. Slide, please. Some of their upcoming projects include a county-wide scatter system, scatter system upgrade, the Boston generator generator and a grand mound waste across a recognition facility. Next slide, please. Moving on to transportation has quite a few projects and quite a few funding sources. Their ultimate goal is to provide a safe and viable transportation system based on to meet the needs, the capacity, safety, maintenance, state and federal requirements. Some of their primary funding sources include the county road fund, the transportation improvement fund, a whole slew of state and federal grants and funds, as well as a few county funds, including the storm and surface water utility fee and the Public Works Trust Fund. They anticipate spending roughly ninety-nine point five million in the next six years. Next slide. Some of the upcoming projects will move in margin for profit, the Pacific Avenue Southeast and the Young Highway Southeast pavement preservation projects. Some AD improvements with the American Rescue Plan, some intersection of projects. My next slide. And then to the county facilities, these are the buildings that we own and a few other things. Their ultimate goal is to design and provide a safe and sustainable facility to serve the public. Their projects are selected based on safety, health, accessibility, operational efficiency and effectiveness of the facilities. They also have a wide range of funding sources, budget, budget, REIT, the central source building research, a few trial detention funds, as well as the ARPA fund. They anticipate spending roughly one hundred and eighteen million over the next six years. Some of their upcoming major projects include safety, security upgrades, county facilities, infrastructure upgrades, system failures, expansion of our processing center, a modern complex, and the county point vehicle charging system. My next slide. So kind of jumping into the other CIP projects that are not necessarily within ours, but we have a reference are the schools, fire and utilities. They again provide a copy of their CIP as a reference within ours, and then they usually have a wide range of funding as well, but it depends on a specific group. Impact fees, mitigation fees, bonds, levies, state funding and grants provide their primary source of funding for these projects. My next slide. So now at the point where you can ask your whole slew of questions that if you're ready, set up.
Do you want to start? Spin. Sure. I maybe I should just go through my questions and then pass it off to the next person. Just yeah. Yeah, P I M. Yeah. Public Works Parks and Open Space Project. Parking that fee. So those are fees that people pay to use to park? Like, what are they? So when a developer has a project, they pay an impact fee that goes into a county fund to be able to do things like sidewalks and lighting and stuff like that. Park specific. Okay, then impact fees and other budget lines, are those impact fees arriving something else? So it's basically all developers are paying those impact fees.
Right.
We don't have any county parks that residents have to pay a fee to use. Okay, so there's no reservations for like a pavilion or picnic area or facility? Yeah.
So I'm I'm having a hard time hearing. So I can hear your question. I I can't hear anything as to what Robin is answering, but we do have park shelters and we do have a lodge at Kenny Dell Park that we do charge a nominal fee for reservations.
Okay, so some of those impact fees are collected from citizens that schedule us?
No.
Okay, so where are those, that money, where's that go?
Close receipt. Pick me up on that. So the reservation fees go into the park fund.
Okay. So that's a specific fund that the park can use to improve the parks and stuff like that. All right. Well, Ed, since you're on there and I haven't ever seen you before, I want to thank you and thank Bill, who he sent out to the undeveloped county park out at Lake Lawrence to put those signs up. Much appreciated.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your information and keep an eye out for us when we're not there.
So. Next one, next question I have is on the Elm Rainier Tenino Trail restroom, city of Rainier. Who would that come under?
I'm happy to try to answer any any question. Just depends on your question.
Okay, thanks, Ed. It says it's a seven hundred and forty thousand dollar project. My question is, wow, that's a lot of money for a restroom. Particularly when you take a look at a couple pages back, there's another restroom along the trail for sixty thousand. Why is the one there at the city of Rainier so expensive?
The so which other one are you referring to? Just out of curiosity, you said there was another one for how much?
On page nineteen of our packet, there's a Sixty-seventh Avenue Southeast Trail restroom.
Yes.
Thousand.
So so that's a pre-designed cost. That's not the actual restroom. That's just a pre-designed working with a consultant to come up with a plan, not a physical building at that point.
Okay, so to design a restroom for a trailhead is costing us sixty thousand dollars?
So what we what we did a couple of years back was we started a prefabricated restroom project to where we could have uniformity and hopefully keep costs down also with inflation and the rising costs. We have seen an increasing cost across the board on those also.
But this is a design. So you've already got the design, it sounds like. So what's the engineering project for sixty thousand if you've already got the design?
So for that, for the site itself, because it's got an existing restroom on it. So the design for the septic or any utilities involved, not just the building itself. So we just have a design for the actual concrete prefab building, not the associated necessarily utilities and whatnot.
Okay, so I guess I'm old school on this. A lot of these are just, these are just plans and potentials, but they're not actually slated to be done yet. Right, but these are costs that were in the budget report for a design of a restroom on a trailhead for sixty thousand dollars, and that doesn't get you anything but the design. Who's doing that design? Is engineering within Public Works doing it or is it sourced out?
I believe the project management would be sourcing that out. That Rick Thomas, I'm not sure if he can hear me. He may be able to help with that answer.
Yeah, Ed, I can. I can hear you on that.
Yes. The actual design is consulted out, we have. Also. Other restroom projects.
Right.
They're in about that same dollars percentage. The costs are really driven by the type of facility that we have to build. It's to be a public. High-tech industrial, just to keep handling some. Ensure that it's a big. So. For those of you who are, I guess, more familiar with kind of residential construction. It takes the huge step up when it comes to build industrial grade type of restroom. Well, yeah, it also includes, you know, several stores.
Understand, but I mean, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for a restroom facility. At the Rainier Park, I mean, that to me is a whole lot of money for a restroom facility.
No, but here it says install new recreational sports courts. So it's not just restroom.
Understand, but there's, I've been there, I mean, I just drove past it and I come here. And it's not, I mean, the sports court's already there and we're done by the community. I don't know if you're putting in a different one or what. It just seems like a whole lot of money for that particular area.
Andrew, maybe you can kind of give us an overview on the CIP and exactly what its purpose is. Because I think that the idea here is that the county is putting together this whole slate of projects.
Exactly.
And they haven't been prioritized yet and they haven't been committed to yet. Just that if they want to do a project, this is kind of the public notice portion before a project, so it's on our radar.
So for the county, the project has to be on the CIP. And so it doesn't mean the project will be completed and the amount may be far less, it may be far more. It just really, you have to be able to put it with a rough estimate based on current inflation, current costs, and current budgetary balance. And so that project may not happen at all, but it has to be on that. Yeah, it has to be in the list to be able to be considered. That's kind of where you kind of throw everything in and give your best guess and.
And we don't know if the funding will be there or not. Or some of these funding sources obviously are loans and grants that we haven't even applied for yet. Some of these are like, we have eighty million dollars worth of REIT funds funding some of this stuff over six years. And the odds of us collecting eighty million dollars in six years would be. That's ambitious, but understanding that eighty million dollars worth of projects that are pointed towards this, probably not all of those are going to get on the board at some point or another, it's going to decide exactly which ones are going to be done, which ones are not going to be done. But if the project's not on this list, then they can't do it at all.
Exactly.
Is that a fair way to describe it? Plus a fund balance?
Yeah.
So this bottom line number of two hundred and eighty million dollars, that's not an unreasonable estimation. Okay. But still, we don't know if or when these projects are going to get done, especially if the funding comes from sources that are not guaranteed. Go ahead, Commissioner Day.
I guess, question for the chair, so understanding that. What would you understand the role of the commission and the scope of our review to be?
I think we're supposed to look at the high points of this, see if there's anything that's grossly objectionable. And if not, we're going to leave it to the people that do this every day to make the financing plans and engineer out the projects and then or decide whether or not they want to go through with them.
Good. And is there a subsequent, question to staff, is there a subsequent kind of prioritization process for these? Are these, is it more opportunistic? Does it vary across departments? So I will say, in addition to Commissioner Cina's comments, the primary role is to hold a public hearing so that we can invite the public to provide comments and proposals. And we incorporate all comments into a single document and provide us to the board and kind of commissioners to have your comments for them to consider the projects as well as they have their own set public hearing, except public comments as well. With relations to the prioritization, I think it falls specifically to each department based on finance. The need of that specific service.
But I don't, I don't think that our job is to go through line by line of the project and see if it's what we want to go ahead and mission.
Well, just a point where it's, it's.
Yeah.
Seven oh six, I'm wondering if we could maybe do the hearing and then come back to this.
Our hearing is scheduled for on or about seven P M, so I don't want to keep a dozen staff here any longer than we have to. But I do want to, I do want to get through this stuff, but I think there are still a few other questions that would probably make your raise. I have a few things that I'd like to do just to make sure that we're all on the same page. One of the big ones is when I go through this hundred and fifty page document and I see a project, a lot of times. If this project page had what the funding was, funding source was, how much it was, that way I didn't have to go back to the table and look at it again, that would make my life a whole lot easier. And if we had like a, I don't know if you guys number these projects or something like this, because sometimes they start sounding like they're the same thing and sometimes they're not the same thing. So if we could do something, and like sometimes I see it's listed as REIT, but I don't, is that REIT one? Is that REIT two? Does it matter if it's REIT one or REIT two? I think it actually does matter if it's REIT one or REIT two. So I think those kind of things are important to know, what we do these again, to have all that information right on that particular page. I'd also think that it's probably important for us to know that this is not a budget amendment update to CIP. This is the whole new twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-eight, this is not an end one, this is a whole new one. It's not really repeal and replace, but it kind of is repeal and replace. And probably another thing to. Think about is, when I look at, I mean, this comprehensive plan is a big document and I probably got lost in there. And I know that what state law says is a capital facility or a capital facility and what county is. So the state says this, these are your parameters, and the county comes in and narrows down exactly what a capital facility is. I don't know exactly what the county says is a capital facility. I know that we have that thing in there that says basically anything that lasts more than ten years is more than a hundred grand and uses REIT, but there's got to be more to it than just that. So like really defined definition of that would, I'm sure it's like a bar's annual or. But it's defined in the, but it is defined in the comprehensive plan. It should be defined in the comprehensive plan, shouldn't it? We should know exactly what the parameters are in the.
At least what the state law.
It'd have to include at least what the state law is and then if the county narrows it down any farther than sideboards that the state puts on it, is that true?
It sounds like.
We're questioning. I was told there's. Definition of capital project in state law.
Okay, so we can call anything what. If it's ten years, a hundred grand, it uses REIT, we can call it a capital facility, even if it's new vehicles for the sheriff. Well, I mean, did we define capital?
In front of us, we could bet that we did, capital. That was my next question, is Thurston County infrastructure upgrades, it gives a description but no specificity. So you just answered my question on that one, there is no specificity on it because you want to leave it as general as possible so that you can put things in there as the plan develops, is that what I'm hearing? Yeah. Yeah, I did, yeah, I just didn't think it should be as broad as it is because it basically is all encompassing Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, urban area, Thurston County, rural. I mean, it basically is the whole county and anything within it for infrastructure. Okay, so then my question was, is this linked to the atrium renovation and the renovation of the Botman project?
It's in here.
Yeah. Which is the bond that they're trying to get voted on? Okay, so when I see bought out as next question, when I see bond, that's the bond that hasn't been approved yet by the citizens. Okay, so the V O C C decided to go ahead and do that without putting it for the two of vote for the citizens.
Yes, they have.
And that was fifty to sixty million?
Fifty, it's fifty million, not fifty-two million.
And the other eight million, eight point five million that we have listed here, it's going to be another on later. You got sixty point five million. That's part of the reasonable, we need fifty or sixty.
Is the fifty million because of the way that it was structured as far as not going up for a lot of the people or?
Fifty million is because we want to stay with the money that the county already anticipates blocking with no increase in taxes and fees. So we think it's reasonable to anticipate that over the next, I think it's a twenty-five year bond issue. Over the next twenty-five years. To be paid on without having to raise taxes.
Okay, that answered my next question, thank you.
Oh, well, I was just wondering if we're going to continue with the going down the line, but Commissioner Day looks like he's got questions, so I wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can sort of hang around, I guess.
I have one suggestion for the tables, I think it could be really helpful to have the project phase. Like if it's in a, if it's in design or it's construct or, you know, pre-designed, design, construct. That could be really helpful, color coding's terrible and not accessible. The second question I have is, does this project list reflect the increase in federal funds available? Because it doesn't feel like it has, and we might want to go bigger. Because there are a lot more funds available. Any of them in the bipartisan infrastructure law?
So we have been exploring our opportunities for that, considering your funding stream. And as of right now.
I know it's a bit.
Well, it's generally new still and the conversation is on TRPC about how the funds are going to be distributed. And it's not like a whole lot of help to the empty. We are exploring the opportunity to apply directly to agencies for some of the competitive awards, but I do not believe that they've included in this document. If we are supporting this, to receive them. Then we would either swap out some of our county funds.
Okay.
Or propose new projects for a couple of years.
Okay. Have to be done at that annual basis?
It would have to be done unless we do a budget.
Okay, and that, so they're all, the federal competitive as well as state competitive programs that are getting plus up to the federal funding.
Front state about what those programs are.
I know.
Actually, I had a follow-on to that. And because I was wondering sort of a similar thing. But are, does this, does this CIP include sort of the list of projects that you would like to do? That you can't, can't do, I mean, is this the comprehensive list of everything that you would like to do? Or is there more stuff that, you know, sort of as Commissioner Day was bringing up? You know, if the opportunity arises to grab some federal money, it's good to be ready. To have something teed up to be able to grab it, right?
There's a little bit of that. There's a bit of a wish list that you will in this document, but we can't go too far down there. Because as I was saying earlier, it requires that we have to be reasonably certain that we're going to receive the money to do projects. So. Prioritize each different section that was presented to you has its own method of going through the process for what it's on. So it's not everything we.
Commissioner Day, do you have more?
Yeah, just, I mean, this might be a little bit off topic, but for the county, how constraining is that requirement? Like, is that make it really difficult to do the capital improvement plan? Does that leave you limited, kind of the grant funding you might chase? Okay.
And then if you were successful on a very large scale, like you mentioned, it's a big CIP. But. Not a funny to recap that. Extremely bad purpose. And there are sorts of funds that you do see in everything that's documented. ARPA, the primary funds, they share those funds.
I have a couple of questions that you can go. Okay, well, yeah, these are sort of both, I guess, fairly high level. I might have a couple of low level ones too, but my really, really high level one is the Nisqually Bridge project. You know, I sit on the TRPC for the Conservation District and we certainly hear a lot. It sounds like this Nisqually Bridge project is going to happen and it sounds like it's going to be very impactful for our traffic patterns in Thurston County. So is there, are you thinking about that planning or not yet? Are you thinking of moving priorities around for the transportation projects if that happens? Are we going to be ready, you know, for that?
Scott, are we ready for the Nisqually Bridge?
For the traffic that we're going to see for, who knows how long?
Yeah, sorry, my audio's been a bit shaky at best, but what I did gather was the DOT project on I five with the Nisqually Bridge upgrades, I guess.
Yeah.
Yes, we will be ready for that, certainly. That's going to be a monumental project that will be in coordination with the DOT on as we go forward.
Okay, so this is, that's reflected, that is reflected in this CIP? The projects that you have here, or is that going to be a whole other kettle of fish?
That is not necessarily reflected in the CIP at this point. The projects that you see listed here are throughout the county. I think we have one or two in that general area, but not specifically to address the I five or the Nisqually Bridge though.
So how does that, you're just, you just change that next year or whenever it becomes more clear?
I am sorry, I'm not change.
Well, I'm trying to understand how it relates, I guess, to the choices that are made about transportation projects, like which, you know, which circles to build or. you know, which circles to build or things like that.
I think I capture what you're saying, but uh. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, do these projects reflect the potential impacts or projected impacts of the bridge construction? Planning construction? And will we have to move these projects around or reshuffle to accommodate that? Did I capture that right?
Yeah.
Um, yes, well, certainly, as we know more with the Nisqually Bridge, um. We prioritize all of our projects annually and, and as those priorities change, whether it's from the Nisqually Bridge or for other reasons, we certainly have that flexibility to move projects around to accommodate the highest need for, for certain.
Ms. Campbell, how many, how many times a year do you figure on budget amendments? Twice a year, so there's probably at least two more times in a year that the C I P could be amended if it needed to be.
It is. The board always has the ability to add additional minimum, like we just ran. Of the capital, of the budget amendment specifically for capital projects. It did not change anything in C I P.
So if something came up, you're never more than a few months away from training to get it added to the C I P? Okay.
And then just two really low level ones, um, again, it's a, I, oh, this is a stormwater question. I noticed that there were two projects that kind of, they were a Was Dot projects. There was Schneider Creek and Kennedy Creek and they kind of dropped out. Um, and weren't, they were in last year's but not this year's, so. Uh, is, is there a reason for that? Or am I right in reading it that way, that there were projects for Schneider and Kennedy Creek? In the stormwater?
Yeah, so those should be on the existing approved twenty-two through twenty-seven C I P. And the files I have on my end still show those on the to-do list.
Okay.
For the Schneider Creek project, I show that ideally going to construction in twenty twenty-four. For the Kennedy Creek projects, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, yeah, I guess I misread it. And then for fish passage enhancement. Uh, is there funding other than the REIT funding for that? Cause I think REIT was the only thing that was mentioned.
Yeah, uh, great question, um. Certainly, REIT has been the foundation of our Fish Passage Program for a while. But we have been very successful in getting some grants to support lots of our projects, perhaps the biggest grant we received thus far was, I think it's a one point seven million dollar grant from Bryan Abbott Fish Barrier Removal Board. That was for the Spurgeon Creek Crossing at Latico Street in the Chilis, Chilis question, Creole. Uh, we've gotten, I think, five hundred thousand dollars for a case road project. One of the other strategies we've taken is to apply for some smaller grants. Uh, we found that we've been very successful in getting grants in the order of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. Um, a lot of the grant agencies that we get money from or try to get money from have very limited pots of money. So initially, we had considered applying for, you know, three, four, five hundred thousand dollar grants. But uh, thought our chances of getting that big pot of money and eating up the whole grant program would be fairly limited. So we've been targeting, you know, the several grants in the fifty to a hundred thousand dollar range and been quite successful in several projects for that as well. And we continue to look for grants uh, very aggressively, so. Rest assured, we try to leverage county money to the best we can with external funding.
Well, one, one final one, you could probably answer too, at the open space, uh, you know, for the, it looked like there wasn't much of a budget for uh, basically what I, I assume is sort of money to acquire properties as the opportunity arises or whatever. You know, then it was, there wasn't much really in this, you know, as a line item. So, yeah, that was my question, is there, there's something set aside presumably, right? So that if an opportunity comes at you. So the, so the money that's listed here. So what, this is just uh, budgeted for sort of looking for those kinds of opportunities or just doing the kind of open space projects?
So this is not a budget.
Both the other, so I don't wanna take too much time on this, but I was just curious about how that how the open space acquisition part or the, the acquisition, property acquisitions, basically. I forget what it's called officially, but um.
It paid twenty forty-nine? Land acquisition?
Yeah, land acquisition, there we go. Yeah, I mean, it was not very much set aside for land acquisition, so I was just wondering how that worked.
That suffered from open space and conservation futures though.
Yeah, this is not. This is for um.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's Parks, Trails and Open Space Acquisition twenty twenty-three program.
No, yeah, that was to increase the number of uh, park acres per thousand population.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Nelson, do you have anything? Commissioner Herman? Just, I got two real quick on the wishlist, if you could put them on there. I really think the county needs to have a, not just a park, but a playground in the South County somewhere. County doesn't have a playground down there, there's a lot of kids down there, if you guys can work that in somehow, that would be awesome. And the other is, I know that we're putting around abouts all up and down, especially along uh, the major materials, but, but if there could be something that's done at Old Pacific in five-ten, gotta that, that is a terrible intersection, there's no bypass lane or anything like that for getting people that are coming home to yell, they get stacked up right there, cause there's no place for them to go, but if you put it on your wishlist, I'd love it, go ahead.
I did want to wishlist is, uh, road set asides. You know, where roads gonna be in the future? That requires capital and something like this, where to buy or buy development rights or whatever. We, we gotta stop making roads to go. All over the place, I need to go. Wide enough so that cars can use them. So I'd like, I, that's a wishlist on my part too.
Okay, we're gonna finish this portion up, um, I really appreciate, I mean, we have a ton of county staff here tonight, our Ole Miss and dinner for this. And I, I hate to lean on you anymore, Ms. Campbell, but if, if you are able to come to our it'd be September twenty-first public hearing, cause I think we're having a work session right after that to have some final, we, we would love to have you back if you're available. Um, I don't know if you guys are planning on making the rest of the staff suffer through this again, but since I don't think that we need to be fine-tooth combing going through every project, we might not need to do that, but obviously that's not our decisions, but.
And hopefully if you, as a group, decide that you don't need the rest of the county staff. Just let us know as a group and we can ensure that it's just.
Yeah, but, but with that, I would certainly entertain a motion if anybody wanted to try to set a public meeting. Or I'm sorry, public hearing.
Move to set a public hearing for C P A for Capital Improvement Program on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, moved by Commissioner Nelson, seconded by Commissioner Wheatley. Um, so again, it's a public hearing for September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two at seven P M or assumed thereafter to hear on, from the public on. Uh, C P A for Capital Improvement Program, call for any further discussion? Can we call for the vote?
Commissioner Prestinger? Commissioner Hanson, absent, Commissioner Day? Commissioner Simmons?
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley? Commissioner Carmen?
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson?
Hi.
Commissioner Haversen?
Hi.
Commissioner Casino?
Hi, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your time and for everybody showing up tonight, even if we didn't ask you questions. All right. With that, we are going to move on to continued business exactly a half hour late uh, with the public hearing for the emergency housing ordinance. And do you do the uh, before I open the public hearing, you speak or do I? Okay, so we will hear from Leah Davis first upon the topic.
All right, good evening, Commissioners, Leah Davis with Community Planning. So just to recap, uh, in July, as two work sessions on this uh, emergency housing ordinance, that was July sixth and July twentieth. Uh, we reviewed the history of the homeless encampment code, the history of the interim regulations and related policies. Today, we will accept public, public testimony on the proposed ordinance. Afterwards, the Commissioners may vote to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Next slide, please. This is docket item A twenty-four, as I said, referred to as the Emergency Housing Ordinance. It is not intended to address unpermitted homeless camps or serve as a standalone solution to the homelessness crisis. This is one tool of many when the Board of Health has declared that homelessness is, uh, has become a public health emergency. The proposed amendment would make permanent the interim regulations that the county commissioners have adopted six times. Some changes have been made to clarify the application requirements and process. These clarifications were identified by Development Services when they received their first application in the fall. This proposal would also change the appeals process. All of these amendments have been reviewed and approved by county departments, including the county prosecuting attorney. Next slide. So community planning has kept uh, the emergency housing ordinance web, webpage updated continuously throughout this process. It does contain a link for community members to comment. Um, also, a web mailer was sent to interested parties on August eleventh. A notice of this hearing was published in the Olympian on July twenty-seventh. And a county press release was issued August eleventh. As of four o'clock today, community planning has received no comments on this ordinance. Next slide. So we could begin the public hearing, Chair Casino, if you'd like to open it?
Yes.
Thank you.
The public hearing is now open. Today, we are here to hold a public hearing on development code docket item A twenty-four, the Emergency Housing Ordinance permitting criteria flexibility. This is a hybrid public meeting, those wishing to testify have appeared in person or joined by Zoom, phone or emailed in comment or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, for those in person, please sign in. For those on Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option. You'll be promoted to panelists when it is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you are dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose star six, unmute yourself. The three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens, help keep track of time. Each person will have three minutes to testify. I'll call out names for oral testimony here in the courtroom first and then online. When you hear your name, please come forward to testify. Time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And we will ask Vina to tell us how the timer's gonna work.
Yes, there will be a three-minute timer showing off on screen up there. It will count down. Zero, it will flash.
Thank you, it looks like we have nobody in the boardroom to testify tonight. Is there anybody online? By Zoom or by phone? I, I can't see that very well, is there anybody with a reason? All right, so this public hearing is now closed. And we will do a work session on this particular issue.
I think five takes it from here.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Casino. So, um, noting that uh, we received no public comment on this um, public hearing topic, the Emergency Housing Ordinance, I do have some um, concerns, the planning commission rose at one of the last work sessions and I'd offer it to the planning commission if you wish to discuss any of these further. Um, some of what was brought up was uh, removing public informational meetings as a waiver. Consider striking language that prohibits alcohol and illegal drugs in homeless encampments and consider adding an upper limit to the number of residents, which may be permitted even with an emergency waiver. And so I'll open up to the planning commission for further discussion.
Um, I think we'll start here, young Commissioner Day was originally one of the product, um, the prohibitions on substances. Do you have any more that you wanna say on that?
I think the one uh, thing I think we might wanna consider is whether or not we can drugs illegal by which jurisdiction, uh, like is federally uh, like, are we using a definition that includes federally controlled substances versus um, substances that are legal in the state of Washington? Um, that would be a consideration. I think that's an option on that illegal drugs question, but I think generally, I think my concern still stands.
The way I, I read the, is that this is the county telling the operator that they have to prohibit drugs. Or illegal drugs. Can the county instead be fed to the operator's discretion? Would that be an acceptable?
I think that would be, I think that would be acceptable.
Is there a dual reason why that couldn't be done?
We could check with the prosecuting attorney's office and ask.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on that particular issue? Go ahead, Doug.
I also raised the issue about firearms and the answer was, because of the we do that in schools. We do it in other places, so why couldn't we do it there?
There are new restrictions laid out for the Supreme Court recently.
Yeah, the grand case.
Really?
Yeah, I was gonna be, yeah.
Yeah, I'll note a comment on that if I may just jump in. Um, we can and we have in the past uh, prohibited firearms, I believe, before the interim language was adopted in two thousand and nineteen, we did have language in there that stated there was a prohibition on weapons. And that was removed through the county commissioners review, um, that, that was really a county commissioner that uh, argued to that point and asked for that specific point to be removed.
But correct me if I'm wrong, but cannot the nonprofit or the church group uh, that is setting up these camps and stuff have a, have that as one of their rules that they want?
Yes, that's correct. They could do more stringent regulations than what is in the code here. This is um, what you see in this code language is just kind of the baseline that's needed in order to get a permit.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Day.
Um, I do assume that we could require, have a requirement for the, for a camp to provide safe storage for weapons. Which might actually be a really good idea if people are otherwise tense with firearms.
My, my big concern is not so much about the the possible perpetrator, but the possible, a lot of these people that are in homeless camps are the most vulnerable and taking away their ability to protect themselves. It's not something I'm terribly interested in joining.
And I don't think that would be the suggestion, I think would be giving them a safer place to keep a firearm or something.
Well, if I was a homeless person that was, you know, under threat. I don't think I'd want my gun locked away or my knife or my bat or anything else locked away at the security tent instead of with me and my camper. But I don't know that.
And I think you would be required to keep it if you wanted.
Before you'd be allowed to keep it.
They just have to have a place where you could.
So this would be another thing that's optional to the uh, operator?
Um, I might have this one be as a requirement to have.
So that the operator will offer it?
I mean, it's, it's essentially state law already that you have to have your firearms.
Safe storage.
Safe storage.
And if you go to a courthouse, you have to check it in.
But I wouldn't suggest that we force people to check them in, but just provide a safe storage space.
That operator provide a safe storage option.
I mean, they might have to buy a hundred dollar gun safe from Harbor Freight.
Would we be able to add that provision?
Yeah, I'll jump in. We could consider adding language like that. I will just reiterate that part of the intent of this ordinance is to facilitate a quick permitting of a homeless encampment. And I would want to check in with Public Health and Social Services if adding in a requirement like that for an encampment could be burdensome on the the nonprofit that is hosting the encampment. You know, these are typically very expensive things to stand up to begin with. And that's why we don't see a lot in the rural unincorporated county or the urban growth areas is because they're, they're already fairly burdensome. It's a big lift for these nonprofits to institute to begin with. And while we could add a requirement like that, the more we stack on, the more burdensome it will become for whoever is applying for this type of a permit.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley.
I sort of agree with that. You know, this is about a waiver. I mean, I think what you're talking about is maybe something that should be a general requirement, but, but it might be something that would be better to waive in order to do this kind of emergency permitting, right? So it's a good idea, but I think maybe its place isn't in talking about doing a way, an emergency waiver. It's more about what the general requirements are.
That's a very good point.
Generally speaking.
And I think this, I don't think this should be a shallow, because A, a hundred dollar safe from Harbor Freight is not going to be safe. You're going to have to have a big, heavy system that you can bolt down to something. Because I guarantee you, if you go to Harbor Freight and buy a safe, I can get it out of that encampment in twenty minutes. Or I can't get it open, but I can take it somewhere where I can get somebody.
I'd be able to identify you then.
Well, let.
You have no idea where to find the safe.
Let's have staff come back on options on that one if we can and, and move on to the next issue. And the next one that I remember was Commissioner Nelson and the waiver of the maximum number of people allowed and whether or not we can have limitations on the maximum number of people allowed. I think that limiting the maximum number waiver to an upper, because right now they can have forty, right? I think with a waiver allowing it up to fifty percent is fine with me, but I don't know how anybody else feels.
I mean, that would be fine with me. I just don't want it to be, you know, we've got forty and here's, we want to camp for five hundred.
Yeah, a thousand by thousand lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think there's got to be some parameters I want to, one person is able to do.
Can we move forward with a fifty percent wait? Okay, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask, there's a, a different upper limit that we might consider. Rather than fifty.
On, on the waiver?
Yeah.
What would you suggest?
I would suggest, I would suggest a hundred percent increase.
From forty to eighty?
Forty to eighty.
What's the, make your case.
I just think about, you know, if, how many people, sixty people. It just, you know, if you have a good site that has a lot of space, we might want to be able to accommodate more people. I think it would all be site specific. Maybe it's increase of up to one hundred percent depending on site conditions.
At the discretion of the director?
Yeah.
How do people feel about that?
I mean, I'm afraid of that. That's eighty people.
Okay.
That's just, my concern is really just somebody going out and saying, I need.
Come on, Scotty, come on. All right. I have a couple too, but does anybody else have any other concerns?
Oh yeah, talk about the first one. Information.
Yeah, that's one. Yeah, okay. Okay, so we could do the public information meeting? Or a waiver of a public information meeting?
I, I don't want it to be a waiver. I don't want it to be a waiver either.
I'm, I'm a, I'm a no vote on the whole thing if we waive public information.
So. I guess, I guess I kind of understand what you're saying. This is kind of an emergency thing. How long do we expect it to wait? I mean, does the emergency might over by time?
Yeah.
Public information.
Well, they stay in there. It's within ten days. So.
Ten days. And it can be done at the same time for the rest of the process, the rest of the permitting process is going on.
They have to notify everybody within a thousand feet of the site. That's not a hard game to school. Yeah. I, I just.
Emergency is four years old, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I just wouldn't want that to happen in my community without some public notification and information. Because we all know what happened down Marvin Road in Carpenter. So, I mean, that type of situation could occur again. And I just don't think it's good for our community assistance without having the opportunity to have a public information meeting.
Go ahead.
Yeah, well, a question on that, sorry, because so what's there? Of the reputation part?
Revoking, revoking the permit?
Yeah, because see, so you know, if I understand the process, so there would be a temporary use permit. It's a decision that they have the power to revoke it.
Yes, if there were violations against the permit, including the waivers.
Yeah.
Yes. So. And there is notification, you know, there's notification of people in the immediate area. And you can just quickly review for us what, what the notification requirements would be under the waiver. Like, what's the difference between having to have a public hearing without a waiver?
Well, it's not really a public hearing. It's just a public meeting.
Public meeting without a waiver versus what kind of information people be given if the waiver.
Maya, could you please bring up the code language draft?
One second, and I will think that.
Because there is some requirement still, right? Yes. And that was connected to the site. So what can people do if they see a notice? And they're concerned and they're, they would call the permitting department, see them.
So we do have a requirement in the language for a notification of all property owners that are within one thousand feet of the project site. And that is a notice of application as well as a notice for the public informational meeting. If there were an applicant that wished to waive some of these requirements, they could waive the public informational meeting. But the notice of application is kind of a standard permitting procedure that happens with temporary use permits like this. So that's not the initial notification of application is not necessarily something that would be waived, but the public informational meeting for citizens to come and speak with staff and also the hosting agency could, is something that could be waived.
And then the notice of application is a standard notice that goes out on many different types of applications, and it is mailed to the owners of every property within a certain radius, in this case, one thousand feet.
And there's a, and there has to be a posting on the road grade.
Yes.
I think there's two signs that are required to be posted on the property.
Yes.
At certain heights and size.
Yep, within nine days of completing the application.
So what would be, would there be any, it would still be an administrative decision, right? Like whether or not there were a public meeting? Would that change the decision making process in the end in any way?
Could you rephrase that?
Well, in other words, well, I'm just trying to think what would be the impact of the public meeting be? You know, what would be the difference? You know, what's kind of the, the range difference between having good notice, the good signs? You know, informing the close by neighbors, et cetera. You know, what does the public meeting add in terms of the decision making process?
It, it would probably influence the decision that the, that the director might make if there were any waivers that were requested. Depending on, you know, how much public comment there was at a meeting and what type of public comment and what the, what the public wants. I mean, they, they say, we don't want the camp, and that may not be an option. They may say, we don't want these waivers, and that would be an option. You know, it depends on what the public comment is. Which they can make with the notice of application. They can also supply their comments.
I'll just go back to what happened on Marvin Road. There was no public information meeting initially. The county decided they own the property. They're going to do it. The people, the community got together and said, no, they called Commissioner McHale to a public meeting at that location, and then the decision was overturned.
So, well, they had a public meeting.
I want to make sure that we're clear about Marvin Road, Carpenter Road project. That was never an application that came into us. And that's why no public meeting was ever, or anybody was ever noticed. It was just discussions at the board level.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember the board discussions.
Want to make sure that's clear for the room, clear for the record and for those here in the board in the hallway.
So the other concern about the notification is it notifies owners. There's a lot of renters that may not get that notice that.
Well, the contact method would be the same. It would be mail. That's the only way we have of contacting people is to mail notices to their homes. And, and the usual social media outlets that we use on a regular basis. So it always goes to the property owner because that's the only person we have listed.
I understand this. That's what I'm saying.
It goes to their, not, it depends. I mean, if they don't live at that site, it goes to their home address or wherever they have their tax.
I think it should go both then. So that people who are actually living within a thousand feet are noticed, not just the property owners. And I would have a question. Like what would be kind of the quickest, easiest way, like how, how could we have this public informational meeting in a way that is, that remains in the spirit of this kind of emergency, quick kind of a process? Like what would that look like?
Well, it's, it's spelled out in the code what it looks like.
Okay.
Because it's already there. It's just that we're asking, or they're asking you to have that waived. And while it's like, I think the quickest they would do this when they post their sign saying they've made application, they also post a sign with it that says there's going to be a, there's going to be a public information meeting.
At this location.
At this time. And so that, that's more notification for people.
Could we make them, could that be done through an online meeting?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes. So maybe the in-person is waivable, but not the online version.
In the non- EHO portion of it, the in-person is waivable at the director's discretion because of health and safety risks?
Yes.
And I think that's fine because it's a health and safety risk, but in general, I'm still, I'm, I'm not good with getting rid of public information meetings.
Well, what a public information meeting is the in-person version is waivable, but not, like you'd still have to have an off meeting. I think that would probably be the simplest way.
I, I think that the in-person meeting, I think that meeting is of extreme importance. It'd make it any easier not to have it because of something, it'd be real hard. It'd be real hard for me to go.
I'm suggesting that it would be, it would still be a requirement, but for the online. At least that would not be a waivable requirement. The only waivable part is that it could, they could waive a requirement for it to be in-person for health and safety or for any reason.
I think for any reason. I would disagree with that.
Because right, right now, they, they can waive it for health and safety. But this is asking for the public information meeting to be waived for both virtual and in-person. And what I'm saying, what I said initially was, I disagree with that. I don't think the director should be able to waive that public information meeting, period. Whether it's in-person or virtual, depending on health and safety. So, you know, and, and I go back to a specific incidents in this county that because you're right, it was not an emergency situation. It had not, it had been filed for by the county, but it had not been gone forward.
No, we never received an application.
Right.
Right.
But there was such an uproar over it, even when it was discussed at a B O C C work session, that the community members got together.
I, yeah, and I think that this, this meeting, I would think that the county want this meeting if for no other reason. If you hold a meeting, you get everybody there at one time, otherwise the thirty day process or however long this is going to take. There's going to be people coming in every day for thirty days and letter writing campaigns and everything else. So if nothing else, I think it's streamlined. If we could just get all the public comment down, the informational meeting, I think.
I don't, I'm not here in state. I'm not here in.
Oh, me? I think I, I don't, I don't think I'd be understood entirely.
Well, I, I, I think I understand why, why you would want to get rid of the in-person or make the in-person wait. I'm, I'm just not convinced of it is all.
I mean, a good example is, a lot of people over sixty years old that might be living in some of these communities. They never were on the internet. I mean, I can give specific examples about our H U A and our L N D that we've got community members out there, about four, five percent of them that don't have internet at all.
They are just over sixty. They might be over seven years. Come on, man.
And at the same time, I do think there, there are accessibility questions for in-person meetings. There are a whole different set of people who in-person meetings are extremely difficult.
That's why both of them, I think, need to be.
Yeah, and, and I think that there's still other ways for the community to reach out to the county about their concerns. I, and I want to have them be able to do it through all means, including in-person. G I M, G I M.
And I think, I mean, having been doing this for a long time, there is a huge difference between getting to go somewhere, talk to somebody face to face versus doing it on the computer. Because I think we missed over the last two years, we missed a lot. You know, the first meeting we had here, I had a half, like a half hour conversation with Christie White after the meeting. And that's something we, you can't do online.
Yeah.
You can't have those interactions.
So you want to draw a board with us?
Yeah.
And just, just to clarity, so it's important to, just to understand what the requirement would be then. So a public informational meeting shall be held a minimum of fourteen days prior to the issuance. So you have to wait. So is that saying basically you have, like you have the informational meeting and then it's two weeks before you can issue a permit after the information meeting? And how long does it take to do an informational meeting? Like, so it's, so it's, I mean, so there is a concern that it could be like a month or something between the time that somebody comes forward and says, yeah, you know, I'm interested in doing this. And getting the permit.
Well, a, a month between this mission of an application and getting a permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say maybe a month, hopefully less, but the, my concern has been that setting up, organizing, finding a space, getting all the technology in place for a public meeting can add significant time to that.
Well, doesn't the non-EHO part of this say that it has to be onsite?
I didn't think that was.
I mean. Or, or in the vicinity.
Yes, I think, I think because of the technology that we go into a hybrid situation, it would have to be.
But it's also the responsibility of the applicant to do it, not the county to hold the meeting.
Yes.
So it's important to the applicant. They can probably find a way.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get at, you know, what is an emergency? What's the, what's the timeframe of an emergency?
Emergencies don't feel very.
Right, right. So, yeah, okay.
All the more reason.
Right, trying to get, yeah, I'm not arguing with it. I'm just trying to understand.
Commissioner Sess, do you have any concerns about that particular?
No, I've not.
Okay. Okay, so Commissioner Pessinger, do you have any concerns with a direction of not allowing or not making the public information meeting waivable?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add. Okay. Okay, so, so please make our recommendations reflect that we don't want to have a public.
Okay, okay.
I, I have two more. Does anybody else have any?
I have, I have a question.
Go ahead.
The example requirement that the C P A director may waive in the Department.
The example requirement that the CPED director may waive in almost the university, the general liability insurance. Kind of, well, if that is waived, then who's responsible for liability at this point?
I would assume in the end, the property owner.
Well, it seems like it's gonna come back to the county somehow.
Yeah.
Well, if it's county property, then the county would probably, we have liability insurance.
The county is waived the, the responsibility.
I have the same concern because I think if the county knowingly issues somebody a permit, knowing that they don't, that they waived the requirement. I don't know how the lawyers would ever say that you do that. Like, if I was a lawyer, I'd probably say, no, you can't tell somebody, don't get insurance, we'll give you a permit anyways.
We, we'll run that by the attorney again.
All right.
I'm sure we have to do it.
Yeah, I would think that once the county says you don't have to have liability insurance, then that almost automatically says, we'll take it on for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I.
You think so?
Yeah.
Yes, well, we know exactly who, who somebody would sue. They wouldn't sue landowner, if I, but they definitely.
They'd sue everybody, yeah.
They would sue people whose pockets.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Maya?
I don't. Uh, we can, we can check in with legal on that.
Okay.
I have one more, and I don't know if I'll get a lot of support on this, but I, I think we should at least consider it. I think that these emergency, the emergency doesn't seem like it's as much of an emergency if we've been doing this for twelve years and never done it. And so the idea of making this county-wide, I don't think it's necessary. I think that we should limit these to twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three and leave Title Twenty out of it. And not have any requirements within unincorporated county and only in the UGAs.
Why is that? If you repeat that, I could.
I don't, I don't think that we should, I don't think it's, I don't think that the, since this isn't really used. I think that, um, we shouldn't encourage it anywhere that we have to. And waiving requirements out in the county seems unnecessary. And if we are going to waive requirements, doing it in the UGA seems more appropriate.
Why? I mean, I guess I'm not understanding what makes.
Well, one of the big reasons is because out in the county where it's all a whole lot less dense, it's gonna be hard to get a whole bunch of people together that would, like, if there are going to be big concerns, but you only have three neighbors, probably not gonna carry much weight. If you're in the UGA and outside of a neighborhood, there are five hundred people that show up.
Part of the requirements is they have to be within a certain distance of a bus drop. Um, they have to be a certain distance away from any, uh, schools or, uh, or something else in there too. And out in the rural area and, uh, uh, in the county areas, I mean, the, just the bus routes are very restricted and limited in the rural county area. Uh, so I agree with you, Eric. I, I don't see why that is even something that would be considered for an emergency.
I see no reason that the ability to, to do the waiver, I mean, I, I'm not connecting the dots here. I think, I think it should be countywide. I, I don't understand what, what makes the difference, you know? The fact that there are three papers maybe makes it better, you know, to put it in the.
Alright, Commissioner. I think, I, I think I see where it's coming from and I think if this were, and I think your intention is, is for the emergency. So we should be thinking about how the policy generally works. And overall, like, policy that incur, I, cause here we go, encourages these kinds of, uh, these kinds of facilities in places where there are services with kind of access we can get around. It is still an emergency ordinance, um, so I'd keep the emergency ordinance. Hearing your concern, I think there's probably need for, I don't know if there is, but maybe more robust policy county-wide.
They're all related. On homelessness. There's just less for emergency housing situation. There is for a regular application process. For setting up homeless camps.
Okay.
And they can do that in anything, any area throughout the county. I mean, different cities have already looked at doing that. Yelm looked at doing it, uh, about a year and a half ago. And the public outcry was so, I mean, the community hall was filled to capacity and outside the doors. Uh, so they voted it down, the council voted it down. But other cities have done that. Rainier's done it, and I, I think it was Tumwater that did it also. Wow, but so that's a non-emergency situation, and I think that's what he's talking about. They, we ought to take the regular course of a non-emergency situation, uh, for those areas, uh, outside the, uh, UGA.
Yeah, this whole ordinance is just about allowing waivers, and I'm not seeing.
And I think if, so the one reason I wouldn't necessarily agree that is that the emergency component of this means like we're trying to, like, set up a place for people and you just have, like, you find one piece of property that's not in UGA. Like, what if it's just outside the UGA? Um, I think, I think the requirements that are in here about kind of the access to transportation, um, things like that. That, and then distance from other things, like, would, I think that puts people in the right places. And for me, it covers the, that covers the concerns I would have about these being kind of anywhere in the county, which are, my main concern would be access to services and having people kind of sequestered in an island where they're stuck. And I think this solves it already.
Go ahead. I think it's, it'll boil down to a practical, much practical. You know, it won't be built, these kinds of things out in the county because the homeless people can't get anywhere. Can't buy, can't, it's just not practical, so it won't happen.
Might be right. It hasn't happened yet in twelve years.
So I'm, I, I guess I'm, I'm not too concerned about it because it, it's, it's not practical. So.
So it's an. Yeah, Commissioner Sess, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, I think the same way, just because I think the, the requirement to have access to public transportation puts most of the rural county.
That's a waivable requirement.
That was my point.
Yeah.
Eliminates them except for about three routes, routes outside of Tumwater, Olympia and Lacey. Seriously.
But that may, I mean, like, I mean, just outside UGA or something. I mean, I just, yeah, I don't see the need to put that split in there. I mean, because they're, right, it just, it doesn't make sense to do that.
Commissioner Sess, do you have?
I, I would just, I don't, I don't see any reason to talk about the emergency housing.
So you're okay? In the county or?
No.
In the county. Okay. Okay, it looks like it's gonna go in the county.
Okay.
Well, we got fiber.
Kevin, you're listening. I'm just, uh, standing up for you. Kevin, do you have any thoughts on this particular issue?
No. Thanks, though.
Thank you, Barry. Okay.
I know what I felt like when I was there.
Then, then, I, I, well, I'm, I'm not gonna hold up on that, that's for sure. So that leaves us just the deal with weapons, drugs, and probably county risk. And public information meetings. And if we can wrap those up, then we should be able to finish this up at the, I don't think we're ready to make a recommendation at this point with those issues outstanding, are we? Maybe I, I, I would entertain it, I would entertain a motion if somebody wanted to make one.
Two.
Whatever they wanted to do.
What was the language, uh, that we talked about on the drugs and alcohol?
I think we, uh, we talked about that as of May, of May versus a, a must. Make it be, it's an operator decided.
Operator discretion.
Okay, but that we were talking about waivers, so the, if the director waives them, the, uh, nonprofit or some could say, no, I don't want to waive it.
Yeah.
Okay.
If they wanted, I don't think the director would waive it.
Well, I agree. You're gonna turn in your application.
Yeah.
And you're gonna ask for these waivers.
Maya, I don't think that the prohibition on drugs is a waiver, is it?
We are suggesting.
I would, yeah, I would have to go back and check if that's a waived criteria.
I, I think it is.
Um, can I, can I summarize what I heard from the planning commission as items we should look into and draft before bringing a draft back at the next meeting?
Please do.
I heard, uh, changing the language, May versus must on alcohol and drugs. Looking at options for providing safe storage for weapons. Wave, uh, the waiver for capacity to a hundred percent increase. Cap at a hundred percent increase. Adding the informational meeting as a non-waivable criteria. Uh, looking into the ramifications of waiving general liability insurance. And that's what I have.
Is not being able to waive.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I think that's correct.
Great.
Just, so, well, where are we on the, um, I got a sense that, well, I don't know, this thing about the, you know, the gun locker or whatever we're talking about, um, was, is that still an iss- issue or not?
That's the option for safe storage. That was number two on my list.
I mean, I was mostly just looking for a way to, a different way to accommodate some of Doug's concerns. So I don't know, I defer to Doug.
It may not be something.
Maya, can you run that one by legal too? On safe storage and gun prohibitions and what they say? All right, anything else on this particular topic? We're still only twenty-five minutes. All right, well, thank you. Uh, we'll look forward to working on that again soon.
Thank you.
Next up is new business on, uh, work session on docket item A twenty-two boundary line adjustment code amendment with Andrew Bond again.
Again, um, so, development code docket item A twenty-two boundary line amendment is a priority project with board, has been, and on and off for the last ten plus years. So I'm gonna ask you to answer your questions until the end, then we can kind of take a look at any sort of questions that you might have. My next slide, please. So with this proposal, uh, with this, uh, work session, I'm gonna go over the overall proposal, kind of give some history on what's kind of leading to this project as well as proposed amendments. At the end of the presentation, I will open it up to questions and if the commission is ready to report, there is a, uh, optional motion to schedule a public hearing. My next slide, please. So again, this is on the official development code docket for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, it has been relatively worked on since two thousand eight with, uh, going in and out for the last ten plus years. Uh, the current language of the code is out of compliance with state law or cases. And what's kind of nice is being able to work over the last ten plus years is that you get some feedback from development services on things that just aren't working or don't make sense. And so we have received, uh, additional comments from development services to help improve the overall station as well as making it a little more clear for an applicant who's applying for an application. My next slide, please. So the two primary reasons, uh, for the, uh, for today, I think, if you have the presentation, might have something wrong. Either there's a graphic that shows it, so, uh, the two core cases was Seattle versus Crispin in two twenty, sorry, two thousand three and Mason versus King County in two thousand five. The Seattle versus Crispin, uh, case primarily touched on, um, irregular state plots and an application to approve undevelopable, undevelopable, uh, lot from being, uh, made into developable. And so essentially what the court said is that you might have one lot that's undevelopable, one that's extremely large. You can adjust it and make two developable lots. However, you cannot make three, three lots out of two. And so that was kind of a hard line established by the courts. In two thousand five, uh, the courts looked at what needs to be taken into account when a, uh, application has been put forward. And essentially the courts decided that zoning and land use regulations, how do we take that into account when establishing, uh, the velocity of a BLA application? My next slide, please. So, kind of diving into, uh, the code changes, there is a lot of straight through. But most of it is just reorganization and cleaning up some of the language that is about thirty years. Um, so the first piece is the application materials. We wanted to go through and clearly outline the expectations for an applicant when submitting an application. Moving on to the review processes detailing the different, uh, language of different codes, regulations that are gonna be considered when a BLA is reviewed. Kind of tied back to the Mason versus King County, making sure it's very clear of the expectations. Uh, standards for BLA, its compact enhancements, not affecting them in a negative fashion. Situational limitations for BLAs. Uh, conflicting with previously approved conditions, expansions or creations of not conforming situations or circumventing existing regulations, all things that we don't expect it to happen, so making sure that's very codified in the language. Procedures to finalize BLA plots, and finally conflict resolution exemption, which is an interesting one that is established within state law that allows, uh, two parties that have issues with the boundary to go through a third party to hopefully come to a conflict resolution. And then that allows them to bypass the BLA process because they were able to work out with an arbitrator. And if that fails, then they have to go to a superior court, the court system decides. Um, so kind of eliminating county planning and, uh, CPED from the overall process. My next slide, please. And the other big piece that we're adjusting is the definition of building site, and that kind of ties back to the, uh, Mason versus King County. We want to clearly define within it that zoning and land use regulations are gonna be taken, excuse me, taken into consideration when it's reviewed. We also listed a few very reasonable zoning expectations, setbacks, lot coverages, shoreline master program, flaring, all things like that. As well as added the health, uh, code and first and county sanitary code, just referencing those, uh, key critical pieces where a review takes place in the BLA. Maya, next slide. As I mentioned, this application has been ongoing for quite some years. And so we've had extensive review by development services and the attorney's office and mostly uh, we've received the most accurate, uh, information from the attorney's office with the current code that you're putting in today as well as the most reasonable, uh, uh, ex- expectations from development services, uh, against the current code. My next slide. That more summarizes, uh, the BLA application. Um, if you have any questions, there's also a motion. Does anybody have questions on this particular?
Go ahead, Commissioner Day. So this is just specifically for boundary line adjustments and we totally separate some of the things like so plans. Exactly. Anybody else have anything?
Just a real minor one.
Let's hear it.
Question, just a curiosity for the unbuildable lots. Uh, what's a, well, it, it's a, well, I'm just wondering what a public purpose is that it can be used for if it's an unbuildable lot? Cause that's some language that's added that any other public purpose. Uh, unbuildable lots used for purposes to have that con- conservation, critical area preservation or any other public purpose. Uh, that's six, number six.
More or less, I think it could be tied to any sort of application related to like, uh, infrastructure improvements, public parks. I think it kind of leaves it open and it's so that it can adapt based on any sort of situation that might arise, both today and the future.
Anybody else? Um, would anybody care to make a motion on this issue to set a public hearing?
Make a motion to set a public hearing for A twenty-two boundary line just the code amendment on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Motion is made.
Second.
Motion has been made to set a public hearing for docket item A twenty-two boundary line adjustment code amendment on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. At, we already have one at seven, right?
I think so, seven P M or soon thereafter.
At seven P M or soon thereafter. Call for the vote?
Commissioner Pestinger? Commissioner Hanson absent, Commissioner Day? Commissioner Simmons?
Hi.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Hi.
Commissioner Carmen?
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson?
All right.
Commissioner Haverston?
Hi.
Commissioner Casino?
Hi, the motion has been made and approved, so there is public hearing scheduled, thank you very much. All right, uh, we will be moving on to our next item and other business, we'll start off with staff updates, and I believe that goes back to you, Maya.
Yeah, I don't have any, uh, major staff updates, Chris did leave, leave me with two points to bring up for the planning commission tonight. Uh, the first being that we do not have a minority report on the shoreline master program yet. And the second being, uh, clarification is needed as to who is signed on for the wireless minority report. Uh, we do have the wireless minority report that we received with Kevin's signature, but we need further clarity on what other planning commissioners are signing on to that.
Okay.
We did receive the, that those notes were sent to her before I received.
Okay, so you have S and P minority report?
We have the S and P minority report, but we do not have for the record who's signing on to either one of them.
Okay, so let's do S and P first, obviously Commissioner Wheatley is signed on, is anybody else, who else has signed, are you, anybody else signed on to S and P minority report that Helen prepared?
Yeah, I'd like to sign on. Clarity on, um, cause I wasn't there for the vote.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yeah, we decided that we don't have to be there for the vote to sign on to.
Well, Joel, Joel said he sent me a note, should I send it to you?
It poured it under me.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so, and then the next one would be for, go ahead.
So I have clarification for the record. Commissioner Day, you're sending on to the minority report for the S and P.
Yes.
And Commissioner Pesinger, I heard, and you're sending out to the minority report for the S and P.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, we get a copy of that.
Minority report.
Because I don't have anything in writing as far as the things that they are disagreeing, I have no idea.
We can check.
You weren't here for ninety percent. Yeah, well, it's our discussion. It's public records, so it will be made available. Okay, now for wireless that Commissioner Pesinger authored, do we have a, a second or other minority report signers?
Has it, has the final version?
Well, we're just worried about.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Pesinger is minor, or does anybody else going to sign on to that?
Have we seen the final version of?
Of Kevin's?
Yeah, Kevin, have we?
Yeah.
I see, I, cause I referenced in draft, it wasn't.
If, if nobody else will sign on to. His, I'll sign on to it then.
I'll, I'll sign on.
Cause we need, we need two for the minority report to be submitted with. Okay, so Helen, you'll sign on to it?
I'll sign on to it.
Okay.
The draft. So for clarification for the record, Commissioner Day, Commissioner Wheatley are sending on to the wireless minority report, um, submitted by Commissioner Pesinger.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for making that.
Cause I'd like a copy of that too, cause I don't know what to do, what.
Why and where. All right. All right, um, next we're gonna do calendars. Our next meeting is September seventh, and we are going to start working on, um, suburbry plans. And we're gonna be doing more on emergency housing, hopefully we can finish those up, is anybody, or those are tentative. Is anybody not thinking they can make September seventh? Commissioner Day? Is not expecting anybody? Jim, did you have your hand up? Okay. On September twenty-first?
Information?
Please.
I saw on the, uh, agenda that it looked like it had the initials G M, I presumed that was on the agenda for the next two meetings. I presumed that was growth management.
Right now?
More detail than that.
It's, it's for Grand Mountain, I'm sorry. We're gonna work on the Grand Mountain suburb area plan next.
Got it, thanks.
You bet. For, uh, September twenty-first, probably work on the Grand Mountain suburb area plan again, C I P, or the C I P, uh, hearing and possible work session. And then boundary line adjustment code, is there anybody that's not expecting to make a September twenty-first meeting? Commissioner Day? Everybody else think they'll make it? All right. So we, uh, we have a few other things for the good of the order, we will start out with Commissioner Wheatley's item.
Yeah, and I don't know quite how to phrase this, but, well, I was just reading the minutes, and on the, um, A twenty-five update for his conversion ordinance. I'm wondering if I can ask for, it looks like we kind of made some correction according to the minutes that we provided the general direction to do four different things. When the eligibility required protecting tree trees, moving forward with one set of conversion standards for inside and outside urban growth areas. I don't think there's four things, and I, at least for the inside and outside of, uh, urban growth areas. I mean, I don't remember what it is that we agreed to, or, I'm just wondering if in the memo that comes forward with the next go around with this, that.
For our next work session, have those items in our package?
Yeah, that it can be kind of, uh, these points where we provide a general direction, maybe it could be clarified. Uh, you know, what, what that means. Um, because I'm not sure, I mean, I'll try to review it, but I'm not sure I understand what we agreed to do, so.
Yeah, okay, so I guess there was some asks of staff for A twenty-five.
Right, so when staff brought A twenty-five to you of course conversion part, there were two slides that we went over that had all the information on. And, um, project manager Ashley asked you if you were generally good with the, the direction that we had presented.
Okay.
We got consensus, our, the planning commission, that was generally good to move forward, so.
So it wasn't like a, you know, okay, all right, then that's, that's our, our rating, yes, yeah.
All right. Okay, uh, next on good of the order, um, we wanted to talk a little bit about the handbook that came from the clerk of the board. Um, Commissioner Nelson, do you want to start out that discussion?
Sure, um, I had, well, I have a really whole thing closely, but I had two glaring issues. Number one was the board giving themselves the ability to remove any member from any commission without cause. So for starters, that's against the state law for, for us as planning commissioners. Secondly, I think it's bad policy to say, when I get elected, I get to throw out all of your advisory board members and appoint all the ones. I mean, on a group like this, that means in twenty twenty-four, we could have six new members, just because somebody new won the election. So I'm, though, I have that concern, I also had the concern about the, um, recuse. Which, to my knowledge. I've recused myself from the planning commission twice for issues that were dealing specifically with, well, one was dealing specifically with property that my uncle owned. Which technically I probably didn't have to do, but I thought was right. The other one was a request specific to a piece of property that I had an interest in. Obviously, I stepped away from that. Um, I think one other planning commissioners ever recuse themselves.
I know I abstained from a vote before because of the conflict.
So, my concern is that the language they use, A, there's very few decisions I can take part in. Because I wouldn't be able to take part in anything to do with agriculture or timber, I wouldn't be, include shorelines, uh, critical areas. There's a long list of things. And we are a, like, we make recommendations to the board as a legislative issue, which. Um, for those that weren't here, the issue that I did recuse myself from was the rezone of the property that the Port of Tacoma bought. The county, after I did that, decided that that was a legislative issue, not quasi judicial. And nobody needs to accuse themselves from anything on the comprehensive. So. I mean, and I think, you know, the other thing I thought of, um, take the egg committee. If you can't make a decision based on the fa- fact that it might affect you financially, how does anybody on the egg committee make any decision in First County if they're a farmer? And I believe that's a nine member commission, and seven of them are former members. So you have the two non-farmer members making every decision. And I think, I mean, my personal preference would be, at the very least, the planning commission, right, that asked the board. Drop looks to requirements. I would also, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I was also asked that the planning commission have a letter sent to all the boards and commissions, asking them. To look at this and make sure they. Know what it says, because, like I said, I don't, I mean, I haven't done this for a long time, and it's, this group has never really been about politics. I mean, we all have our own politics, but, you know, we've all, in my time, we've always been able to ninety percent of the time come to a consensus. And I think when you start to replace people on a regular basis, based, you know, based on politics, that's gonna change this group.
Commissioner Wheatley, go ahead.
Oh, well, I just had a question, I mean, I only very briefly, I haven't really delved into it. Uh, but I was kind of curious about, um, the planning commission being sort of wrapped in with the other complaints because it's different. Um, so I'm wondering if that's, I mean, should we like have a work session or something and discuss this, I mean, I'm not, I'm not prepared to.
Well, this is a, a board policy, not a planning commission policy, so.
But, yeah, you're suggesting input, and how do we, how do we discuss it if we don't sort of schedule a discussion about it?
I, I, I think a couple of, I think Scott's issue about the legality of, of replacing members, that's kind of a cut and dry thing.
I don't know if it is or not.
Well, the, I, I know that state law actually prescribes how planning commissioners can be removed, and has to have a public hearing, it has to be for cause and those kind of things, so it can't be just discretionary. But I imagine that's an oversight on the board's part to not include that kind of language.
That's, board treated, so, um.
They might just not be aware of that, of the state law on a particular issue.
That is a possibility out there.
Go ahead.
The other thing that's not quite as obvious as, as the examples that, that Scott made is, uh, anybody that lives in a housing development, can that can't vote on the wireless plan?
Well, I don't, I mean, I haven't read it, so I don't know if it really says that or not, um, you know, I mean, you're saying it, Scott's saying it, but I haven't read it.
But what I'm saying is, conflict of interest isn't just, you know, like, I live on a lake, so, the, I'm happy, we'll say, you gotta, when you're talking about lake issues, you should recruise yourself. Well, you live in a housing development, you should recruise yourself from anything that has to do with housing developments. It's the same analysis, so.
I guess I'm a little skeptical because, I mean, I've read enough about, um, because I was kind of curious about whether being on the, uh, the conservation district constituted a conflict of interest in. You know, sort of, it's sort of like the egg committee or something, you know, um, and so, you know, I kind of was looking at that.
Technical reading.
And, well, right, I mean, I don't know, but I do think that the, the way it's construed is pretty, I don't know if you'd say lib- liberal or not liberal. Uh, but I guess I'm not necessarily, not having carefully read the language, I'm not sure if it's a concern or not. Because, I mean, it is the fact, the fact that there's not supposed to be conflict of interest, but it's also pretty well spelled out what that means. And it's pretty, I mean, it has to be pretty, I guess, egregious or something. Yeah, it'd be a conflict of interest, so not having really scrutinized what it says, I'm not ready to, um, you know, object to it because it may not be as concerning as.
Commissioner, you have something?
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't dived into it either, but if it's as you suggest, that's, I mean, it kind of defeats the whole purpose of advisory committees.
Yeah, our conflicts, our conflicts are why we're here.
Exactly.
Our experience is why we're here and why they asked us for recommendations is because of those issues. Um, so I don't think we're gonna come to any conclusions tonight, but I think that we probably do need to have a conversation with the clerk of the board about these concerns about. Not only legality of open commissioners, but what our scope is.
Comments maybe. Email address to G P and, uh, it does not come from the planning.
I think that's the best way to do it.
You will not have another planning commission meeting after the board set that line to provide comments.
Well, there we go, well, there we go, oh, I hope everybody gets a chance to read those, if you have something to say, please do let Jamie know. All right, the, the other thing that I had is I wanted to, um, let everybody know that the county is kind of going through an update to formalize and make consistent. Um, things within boards and commissions when it concerns things like minority reports and meeting minutes and agendas and all that kind of stuff. And so we've had some contention over these issues lately, but I think in the very near future, we're gonna have something that's gonna be countywide policy on these kind of things, so if we could, um. If we can not worry about this for a little bit, and tell staff is able to update some new plans, and then come back with those in the near future, and that would probably make things easy. Everybody probably get where we want, you want to have anything that, is that fair? All right. Okay, with that, does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Having no further business this meeting is adjourned.